This time we'd like to call to order the February 18th, 2014 City Council Meeting for the City of Yukon, Oklahoma. Please rise with me for the invocation from Pastor Bob Younts, First United Methodist Church, and the flag salute.
Let us pray. Oh eternal God, in whose grace we live and move and have our being, in our gathering tonight, we pray your blessings upon this city council, upon those who gather in this place, and upon our community. We pray that all the conversation and all the decisions made tonight might reflect what your will is for us at this time in our history together. We pray your blessings of prosperity upon our community and upon all the citizens who live here. Bless this night, oh God, with wisdom, with grace, and with love, all who speak in these chambers. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Smith.
Here.
Gerba.
Here.
Alberts.
Here.
McCarron.
Here.
Yanda.
Here.
This time we have presentations and proclamations. We do have one this evening, Playful City, USA. If Jan Scott would meet me up front, please.
I'll bring a place to get a seat. I don't see any part where we can.
I'll read the proclamation. Whereas Playful City, USA, is a national program honoring cities and towns that make playful, make play a priority, and use innovative programs to get children active, playing, healthy, and whereas the citizens of the City of Yukon prioritize healthy living each day by engaging in active fun, and whereas having play is a valuable part of child's healthy development, and whereas a productive, healthy, and physically fit child becomes a socially competent and productive adult, and whereas the City of Yukon acknowledges that children are the most valuable resource, and that we must promote and ensure an abundance of safe and accessible play spaces for all of our children, and whereas the City of Yukon will strive to ensure annual recognition as a Playful City, USA, community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Yukon that each supports the City of Yukon being named a 2014 Playful City, USA, community, signed by me, Mayor of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma. Jan, I know you have something valuable to share.
This is our second year to receive this honor, and it is an honor, and our staff went out and did an audit on all the play spaces in Yukon, and that's at all the schools and city parks and daycare centers, and so we have a lot of stuff going on, a lot of programs. Do you want to say anything? Anyway, we're thrilled, we're thrilled to have this honor again.
Thank you, Janet. This time I'd like to present you the proclamation. Thank you. If there are any visitors here that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item, please come forward, state your name and address.
Jan Scott, 532 West Main is where I am most of my life, so. Joanne Altman is not able to come tonight, so she's presented her annual report for mobile meals, and you have this written report, but she wants to thank the city for providing space for mobile meals, and we do provide the director through our Parks and Recreation Department, and I'll read a few of these. They serve 245 days, a total of 20,368 meals. The average is 83 people a week. Volunteers are the heart of the program. They recorded 5,756 recorded volunteer hours donated to the program, and based on $8 per hour, which I think is low now, that's $460,000 in volunteer hours. And John Irvin had the highest record of volunteer hours, 521, which is really great. And also, we're in partner with the Oklahoma City Food Bank, Regional Food Bank, through Walmart, and we received 187,658 pounds of food through this program, which is a huge savings to the mobile meal food budget. And the motto is neighbor helping neighbor. So this is your report for 2013.
Thank you, Jan. Do we have any other visitors?
I guess I'm elected. I'm Julie Watson. I live at 1129 Moose Street in Yukon.
I'm sorry, Julie, what was your address?
Watson.
1129 Moose Street.
Moose.
Moose, Van Allen Magician. I've lived in Yukon since I was four years old. I have three kids here, a freshman, a sixth grader, and an eight-year-old, and obviously a bunch of us are here representing soccer. I am both a board member for Yukon Soccer and for Canadian Valley Soccer, which is our competitive program. We have 630 as of the other day recreational players registered and playing out of our ranchwood fields. We have 320-something competitive players and another 100 academy players, which are U8 through U10, and it's kind of a transition between our recreational and our competitive program.
How many did you say there?
There are, how many?
Yeah, it's 630 recreational.
630 recreational, 325 competitive, and 108 academy players.
And those are the transition players?
Those are the transition players, yes. We have a recreational program goes from age four all the way up through U17, and our academy program starts at U8 through U10, and our competitive program starts at U11 through U18. The recreational program all plays off the ranchwood fields, and we've been here before to talk about our traffic issues and, you know, we have people parking on the other side of Cornwell and trying to cross because we don't have room. We do everything we can with scheduling to alter start times, to spread things out. We've had to start doing some Sunday games. We are actually turning players away because we have trouble getting enough coaches, and we have trouble getting in all of the schedules here. Our competitive program is all playing out of Cornwell Fields, which is a piece of land that somebody is being nice enough to let us use. We don't own it. We have to pay and maintain all the mowing, the watering, and it's really, really hard for us to compete and to be able to play fairly compared with other clubs around the city because we have to completely support that all by ourselves. But at the same time, we are hesitant to invest very much money into it because it's not land that we own. So we have trouble building our program because we can't fix the fields, and we can't put the money into it because we don't own it, but we don't quite know where we belong. So, you know, our hope was to go towards Taylor Park. Obviously, there's some issues there with drainage and watering and parking lots and railroad crossings, and we understand all that. So we are extremely excited about what we saw in the paper, about the potential of a destination park, not only for soccer, but hopefully for other programs. I also have a cross-country runner, and I know that when they try to practice because of all the city lights and the Christmas lights in the fall, they're limited about being able to use boot hill because of the electrical cords, and, you know, I can't help but think but running trails and things like that out here as well would just be a huge benefit for those programs, for us to be able to have our own meets. Right now, we have to go to Southwest Christian to host our own cross-country meets. So, you know, we hope that, you know, this can happen. You've got a lot of people here behind it that would really like to see a destination park, you know, not just for soccer, but for the rest of it as well. Any questions?
No. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Are there any other visitors that would like to address the council on a non-agenda Seeing none, we'll recess as the Yukon City Council reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A, the YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of February 4th, 2014. Do we have a motion?
Show move.
Second. Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Gerba.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. This time we'll adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1 is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of February 4th, 2014; B, payment and material claims in the amount of $383,723.91; C, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for March 4th, 2014, 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street. Do we have a motion?
Show move.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Item 2 are reports of boards, commissions, and city officials.
None this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to reorganize this agenda slightly. We're moving item 5 ahead. This will now become item 3. Consider an approved resolution, 2014-03, a resolution declaring the City Council's intent to study, evaluate, and consider the development of a Yukon sports facility, directing the city manager to undertake and conduct a series of community and/or neighborhood meetings, and reporting the cumulative results of those public meetings to the city council no later than May 6, 2014. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
A couple of, Grayson, the pressing question that I keep getting is where, and I think the theme that you've developed is we need to figure out the what before the where, so could you explain what process you see this resolution supporting?
First of all, we don't know how much land until we figure out the what. What's going to be in the park? How much is required for each part of the park? When that is decided through meetings, then we can go out and seek an appropriate site that would meet our needs from a land standpoint. It is also putting the cart before the horse to start deciding where. Right now, I can tell you that land is not getting cheaper around Yukon. The land itself, as our learned council has found out, is expensive, and it has to be acquired at the right spot, at the right time, for the right purpose, for anything to work. So as we move forward, I would certainly hope, and maybe I'm being Pollyanna about that, but I would really hope that we could keep the focus on what should be in the park. How many soccer fields? How many baseball fields? How many softball fields? How much parking will be required for each of those? Do we need an indoor aquatic center? Do we move forward on walking, hiking, biking trails? Do we provide for fishing? Do we provide for irrigation of the non-turfed areas? How much turf do we need? How much lighting do we need? All those things chew up land, and until we decide what has to be in that park, as a community, I don't see us being able to move forward on any piece of ground. Do we have ground within the city that is suitable for what we're proposing? And I think as time goes along, as public hearings are conducted, that those answers will come to us, that pretty soon we're going to be able to say, yes, this is how much land we need, these are the sites that are suitable and appropriate, and be able to move from there. Have I fully answered your question?
Yes, now I have another one. Genie, that's not funny. Okay, so now it says we're going to conduct a series of community indoor neighborhood meetings, so I think everyone knows what those are, but tell us what those are, and how can all these people that are here, how can they be, for the camera that can't see, there's 50 or 75 people here tonight, but how do these people become involved at the next level, at the meeting, do they organize?
Certainly, we intend to start with the park board. They are your representatives for this city. You each have a representative there, and that is where appropriately the city should start their discussions. They will then, as a board, recommend where we go as far as, do we do it in neighborhoods? Do we do it just, anybody show up? Do we do it for just a group representing soccer or baseball, the Optimus Club, whatever? They all have a place at the table, and I think they all need to be heard. So it's a process. I think probably after two or three meetings, we may have an additional set of meetings that we identify that really need to occur.
Notice of these meetings that'll all be public meetings?
All public meetings.
Be, noticing the review and on our web?
On our website, on the television, our television channel, all of that. And if the timing is right, we'll even put a stuffer in the, you know, in our bills, our city bill.
Currently, the park board is meeting over across in the other building, is it not? Is that room large enough to have that?
No.
Kind of a meeting.
No, and I don't know that we'd really want to have it in a city facility at all, to be truthful with you. I think that those meetings need to be pretty much on neutral ground. I think they need to be facilitated. I think that we want the best thinking of everybody. So we've got, to do that, we must then provide an environment that causes people to want to speak, that is not, they're not threatened in any way, and no one person dominates the conversation.
Mr. Alberts, had you completed your questions?
I did, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Gerba, do you have any additional questions?
That's it for me. Thank you.
I would just say, ask this also, and this is an obvious question, but our citizens do not have to be part of a sports organization in order to attend these meetings. All are welcome.
Everybody.
And therein lies the reason for this, or the need for this resolution, in my opinion. We need to, I think, authorize our city manager to organize this, put it together, move forward to be able to determine whether this is a feasible project for the City of Yukon, and if so, how do we go about it, and what do we need? So I think it's a positive move. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Alberts.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Now we'll address what was item 3. Public hearing presentation of the proposed Frisco Road Economic Development Project Plan by Leslie Bachelor, Development Counsel to the City of Yukon, and Larry Mitchell, Director of the Yukon Economic Development Authority for the purpose of providing information and to answer any questions from any interested persons about the proposed project plan. So at this point, do we have any citizens that would like to come forward? State your name and address, please.
My name is Ward Larson. I live at 2520 West Olympic Drive, Yukon. Been a resident here for a while, and first question I have is who are the developers? Every release I read about the TIF project, Tax Increment Financing Project, references the developers, but I don't believe, I've recently heard a name, I've heard that the developers have changed or morphed with the addition of other developers and other interested parties. Who are the developers?
I can, I can, I can address that question. We are working with a group from Louisiana. They refer to themselves, or the development group is referred to, as the I-40 Development Group. There are three principals at this point in time. They've retained an engineer and a professional planning group out of Dallas to assist them in putting together concept plans for part of that development, and we have been visiting with them for the last nine months or so.
Has, excuse me, have the developers been fully vetted out? Have we done background on financials, criminals, criminal checks, et cetera?
We, that is beyond our purview. The developers have a contract with the Archdiocese for the purchase of that property. We do not have control of the property. The city has no interest in the property at this point in time, so for us to be able to predetermine who buys the land and who develops the land would not be appropriate.
One last question. Why is this project not being presented for a vote of the people?
I can address that as part of my presentation. My name is Leslie Bachelor. I'm with the Center for Economic Development Law. I represent cities and towns all over the state of Oklahoma in setting up TIF districts and other public-private development projects. Under the Oklahoma Local Development Act, which is what sets up a TIF district, and I'll explain that more when we get into the overview of the plan, it doesn't raise anyone's taxes. It doesn't create any new taxes, and it doesn't incur any debt, so it doesn't trigger any of the things that would require a vote of the people. Taken down to its simplest level, it is just a project plan. When a city or small town has a project that they want to carry out, and it's going to need some public investment to help generate that private investment, by taking a concerted planning effort about how you're going to pay for that, what you'd like to see happen, and it's sort of a way of framing the plans going ahead. As you go forward, you need to do things like have the specific contracts in place with developers. If the public side is going to be doing something, then you make sure you're going to get the commensurate deliverables from the developer. You vet them, you make sure it's someone you want to do business with, but at this early stage, what we're really trying to do is sort of raise attention to an area that is eligible for assistance under the Local Development Act, and kind of make a commitment saying, if the city will invest in public infrastructure in this area, then we'll be in a position to generate the kind of quality development that the community wants to see, and not just let things happen willingly. So it doesn't raise anyone's taxes, so we don't have to have a vote of the people. Instead, what the act does is call for public hearings like this one, and representatives of the public, three at-large representatives have participated in a review committee that the mayor chaired and that the planning commission was represented on. One of the county commissioners was there as well. You get input that way, and then at the end of the day, you've got a plan that can be adopted by the city council.
So in essence, you're saying that a part of your answer is that there's absolutely no risk to the city in this enterprise?
Not in adopting a project plan itself.
No, beyond that, ultimately.
As you take steps forward, of course, there are risks. There are risks when you go out to pave a street, that it might or might not be done properly. There are risks when you spend money, but you do each of those steps just the same way the city does it now, with care and attention, making sure that it's a sensible expenditure, that you're putting roads in the right place, that this is the kind of development you want to see. By taking a conscious approach to it, you end up asking more of the private developers. You say, you need roads paved here to do your project? Well, then, we're going to do design review to make sure that your store isn't just another windowless box that doesn't do anything for anyone here. We're going to make sure that it's nice enough that if I load up the kids to go buy a pair of shoes, it's someplace we actually want to spend the afternoon, and not just someplace that people are happy to pass by on the interstate.
So the city will have some say in how the development evolves?
Absolutely.
What goes where, and what the appearance, the requirements are of the structures?
Absolutely.
So we're not totally removed from it, then, as you inferred at the beginning?
Right, not at all. On the land purchase itself, people can go purchase land any day, you know, it's a free market, and we have to work with the market. But when people start coming to the city, asking for city commitments to build roads or put in an interchange, then yes, at that point, we look very hard at who we're doing business with and whether they'll do the things they say they will do.
Thank you for your time, Attorney Bachelor.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Bachelor, just very quickly, ultimate decision as we move ahead lies within this council body, is that correct?
Absolutely.
I can't boil it down to much more than that, and I didn't hear any inference of anything other than that, others may have, but the decision-making process will flow through this council, whoever is on this council at that time.
That's absolutely right. If it's of use to the council, and in accordance with our announcement that we'll give a brief overview, a presentation of the project plan, I'd like to just highlight what the plan does do very briefly.
Please do.
What it does do is make a commitment that in this particular area, and the boundaries that have been identified here are the area primarily south of I-40, between Frisco Road and Garth Brooks, extending a little bit up Frisco Road because it'll probably need to be widened if we can get an interchange put in at I-40 there at Frisco. These boundaries are called like the project area, where we're going to spend some money to help make things happen. In that area, when we generate the private investment and we have new sales, there will be new sales taxes there. Not new in the sense that we're raising taxes or creating a new one, just that there are events, economic events happening there that aren't happening now. With those new resources, the city will use those to pay for what it took to make it happen. It's a little bit like solving the chicken and egg problem, like you can reach forward in time because you know if you invest in infrastructure there, you will generate economic development. So the project plan identifies these boundaries. They're on the exhibits attached to the end of the plan in the council's packet, and they're available on the Yukon Economic Development Authority's website if anyone's interested in looking at them. So within those boundaries, you have a budget for what you can spend, the maximum amount. And under Oklahoma law, the way a TIF district works is that you can collect taxes within that area and spend them on the identified project for a period of time of up to 25 years or until you hit your budget, whichever comes first. So the longest it can be is 25 years, but if your project launches quickly and goes great guns, you may capture all your expenses and do everything you want to do in 15 or 17 years. So the second thing you have is your budget. The budget items identified here are primarily public infrastructure. They're the sort of things the city does every day. The thing that's different about it is that the local share of the I-40 interchange is a pretty hefty piece, and so by focusing on generating the resources necessary to do that, the city will put itself in a position to generate economic development south of I-40, more towards Frisco Road because you'll improve the access there. So the budget is for a total of up to $37 million, 25 million of which is for public infrastructure, especially transportation-related improvements, infrastructure, and public amenities. The second major item is development financing assistance and land acquisition, up to $10 million. And then there's some money put in, $1 million for general project implementation, whether that's engineering, architectural and design review, legal costs, marketing studies, and then there's $1 million for contingency. It's the second big piece, the budget. The third big piece is where does this money come from? And that's the increment. So the TIF district is the Tax Increment Financing. The increment is anything new that's generated there, and what the review committee recommended is that 90% of the city's undedicated sales taxes generated in the area- taxes generated in the area would be captured and spent on the project. In that way, the dedicated portion that's already committed to fire, police, public safety, you know, whatever your dedicated revenues go for, will increase when we generate the new sales in the increment district. We're not taking anything there, so that will grow because of this project.
Actually, the, am I correct in understanding also it goes from currently 2% dedicated to this TIF district will actually be a 2.2?
Um...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then...
As far as the dedicated?
Correct.
Money.
Okay. And then, in addition, we've backed off that slightly by taking only 90% of the undedicated, because it allows for a little breathing room to make sure that if there are increased costs for the city, whether that's that you have more people coming, so you need more police patrols down there. If there are additional costs, it won't come out of the city's general fund already, so we'll generate more revenues, pay any additional costs. The last two categories are the authorizations, and then a little more about the specific projects, which basically we've covered. Again, going back to the point that it's just a plan, the authorizations state clearly that the city, through the city council, remains the entity in charge of carrying out the project. It will do that with the assistance of its public trust, the Economic Development Authority, which by Oklahoma law is the entity set up to do financings. So if and when it becomes appropriate to issue bonds or notes to help carry out the project, those would be done by the Economic Development Authority. And like with any other indebtedness that the City of Yukon ever incurs, that comes to this council for approval and a public vote, and is done either through competitive bidding or an explicit waiver of competitive bidding. The same prudent financial management that has put the city in the position it's in now will take it forward in this project. Last but not least, the statute requires that we list, you know, the projects to be carried out. On the public side, that's the identified transportation expenses. On the private side, we anticipate that it will be major commercial development, including a hotel conference center. But that, there's much to be worked out over a period of years. And on that side, Larry Mitchell can give a bit of an overview about what's, what we anticipate?
Well, sure. We have been, I think it's on.
It is.
Are we good?
You're good.
We're good. Okay, thus far, we have been discussing possible projects with a group out of Louisiana, I mentioned earlier, but if you'll note, if you look at the district map, that map incorporates more area than just the 180 acres that we've been talking about, so you could end up with several developers. We've also been negotiating with a hotel conference center group out of Dallas to build a hotel conference center, and our negotiations have been to use the hotel motel tax, occupancy tax, to help fund the conference center. Most conference centers are lost leaders, as they say in the, in the business world, and very few developers want to fund a conference center without some support from the community, and we think that the conference center is a valuable enough asset for the community to make those kind of arrangements. And again, as Leslie pointed out, we would have a development agreement, which would spell out all the terms and conditions of the development, and would give us the ability, either through the Economic Development Authority or through the city council, to review those documents, to have some say on the design and the layout of the project, and be able to discuss and negotiate public amenities as part of any of that type of development. So in our budget, when we worked through the review committee, we estimated that the private investment in this project area would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $75 to $80 million, and the public investment would be somewhere around $50 million over the life of the project. We're not going to run out and issue $37 million in notes tomorrow, because we really don't, we aren't that far along. We're simply putting this planning tool in place that will allow us to make those steps or take those steps. Is there anything else you'd like to ask, Ms. Bachelor?
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council for Ms. Bachelor?
Well, I just have one. And what do we anticipate our percentage? Okay, we're talking about the interchange is going to be really expensive. Do we, the city is not going to pick up 100% of that, that cost for the interchange, is that correct? Basically, the state has got, since it's a, the interstate has got a vested interest in that also.
Well, typically, highway projects are funded 80% federally, 20% locally. In this case, we believe that the City of Yukon will be asked to raise that participation. In addition to the hard cost of putting the interchange in, the city is also obligated to pay for all what we call soft costs, which would be the engineering, environmental review, right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation, all of those activities prior to the actual start of construction. So we're looking at approximately $3 million in, in soft costs, and then potentially at least 20% on the actual construction of the project. So in this case, we might be looking at an expense of somewhere in the neighborhood of $7.5, $8 million locally, with the balance of that coming through the Federal Highway Administration. Now, we have been very fortunate in getting the Frisco Ridge, Frisco Road interchange added to the ODOT eight-year plan. It was not included up until this year, and this year, that project has been added, and we're attempting to encourage and coax, I guess is the best way to say this, ODOT to, to make this interchange a priority, because we believe, and we've been told by several groups, that without the interchange, a lot of this project will not happen. We can, we can certainly provide access to the first phase of the project by extending Health Center Parkway into the project area, but in order to have a fully developed project and have it viable long-term, the interchange is the necessity, and I think it's also a necessity for the community because the kind of growth we're seeing in this region, even without that development.
Larry, you might also share what our initial economic impact study, who it was done by, and what it indicated?
Sure. We did an independent study done by Three Rivers Analytics, and we asked them, based on a group of assumptions that we gave them, they have a software program, they can run these assumptions. We wanted to verify that what we were using for our revenue was adequate, and the results of that study showed that we could expect over the life of the project, if in fact, 750,000 square feet of commercial retail is built, that the city's revenue stream off of that project would be in the neighborhood of $12 million a year. Now, that's four cents of sales tax, and we're only capturing two, so you can see the impact of that development on the city's general fund. $6 million into the general fund, and $6 million projected for the TIF district. We are very conservative in our budget, and we are taking the number of $3 million versus the four to four and a half that the study showed us. It's very hard to predict how that development will occur, and even in their study, they made the assumption that a third of the project would happen fairly soon, within the next three to five years, and then the rest of development might take a much longer time, period, and it's really hard to project how that gets developed out. So they basically backloaded the assumptions into the out-years to generate that number. So we could see that project actually happening faster than, than what we're showing. The report also, the study also showed that at the end of the project, at the, at the end of the life of the TIF district, that we could expect somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,000 additional jobs being generated by the businesses that either directly or indirectly locate or provide services to this development. And the last point that, that I'd like to make is that we are not asking or trying to structure this TIF district to capture ad-form taxes or property taxes. So the schools would benefit from increased value. Obviously, if you take a vacant piece of property and you put a million-dollar store on it, your property taxes will go up significantly, and the same for the county. So just for the hotel conference center, the projection was that at the completion of that project, we would see somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.8 to $2 million in new ad-form taxes over the life, over the 20-year life of the project. Larry, this 20-year life you're referring to is the approximate life of the TIF district itself that does expire at that time? Yes. Well, under state law, it's 25 years, but we believe, due to the interest in the, in the growth that we're seeing, and you've witnessed it, you've seen that, that we have building permits issued for several retailers already, and, and we think that's going to continue over the next eight to 10 years. So we think that will, that development will accelerate. Understand. Also, the $3 million, the conservative figure of $3 million annual income for the city into our capital fund, that, I know that is a projection, and we'll know when it happens, but that $3 million is an annual projection. It is annual. That's not $3 million over 20 years. That's annually, with the development, potential income for our city, conservatively. Once, once the development occurs. Understand. Yeah, it starts out, TIF districts, I thought Grayson did a great job several months ago when he put the little chart on the wall, but basically, if you, if you look at the life of a TIF district, it start out, it's very gradual, very low, and then it starts ramping up, obviously, as the development occurs. And to Leslie's point, what we're talking about here tonight is simply putting a plan in place. If no development occurs, then there's no revenue, there's no need for the public investment. So one encourages or supports the other. My experience is that once the public starts making the commitments and starts making pledges to make those investments, then the private development occurs.
I would also like to point out very quickly that because of our geographic location and the fact that we are basically surrounded by Oklahoma City, we find ourselves in a competitive situation almost daily. That window is not getting wider. In fact, the window is closing, and we, as a community, if this is what we want to do, and I, I sense from council that this is the direction we want to go, that we've got to move now. If we don't, Oklahoma City will. So the window is shutting. It's not getting wider, and we've got to move to take advantage of the opportunities that we have presently. Leslie, Larry, would you?
I would, I would agree with that. I mean, if you look at where our city limits are on Frisco Road, for example, or on 10th Street, we know our, who our neighbors are. Mr. McCarron, you had a question?
Yeah, just, just to touch on the bonding. We talked about $37 million that eventually probably will wind up being bonded or required somehow.
Well, a portion of that. I think you, you can use other resources. You don't necessarily have to borrow money, but in some cases, you would.
Yeah, but I mean, how do you see that playing out? I guess, that's my question. How many bonds and what kind of a frequency, or you don't have any idea?
We really don't have any idea. I mean, one of the very fortunate things we have in Yukon is that we do have some capital infrastructure money set aside that can be used to, to pay for some of the improvements upfront, and then the city gets reimbursed through revenues from the TIF district. So there is that advantage. You're not starting out with zero. You have some assets that you can use to help fund some of the improvements. Without incurring debt? Without, yes.
Yeah, I was, that's, I just, I wanted to see how you thought that the bond thing would, would play out.
Correct. Well, it's very hard to determine, because you, you line up, obviously, the notes with the development. In most cases, the notes are purchased by the development.
So then it will be an ongoing, multiple occasion thing?
Yes, and, and the experience, and the experience I've had is that you, you negotiate the development agreement, so the developer pays for the improvements and only gets reimbursed after that improvement is made, and the revenue stream, the revenue stream starts flowing into the project. So the developer is really the person taking the risk. That person is, is buying the note in order to get the improvements they need to make the development happen, and they only get reimbursed when the revenue stream starts picking up that's projected. And each one of these projects, we will do a spreadsheet and, and a pro forma, and, and determine how those monies are going to be collected, and how they're going to be reimbursed to the developer.
That is not clear yet, but it's...
No, it is, not at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have any other questions?
I have a list.
Go for it.
Mr. Albert?
Okay, sorry. Leslie, I guess first my question would be, how many other projects like this, TIF-type projects, have you and your firm worked on?
About 18, 20. We've done most of the TIFs in the state.
Okay, and for instance, if I recall, the Devon Tower is something you worked on?
It is.
The Skirvin?
It is.
And of those 18, have, have any of them failed?
No, I, under, I don't want to overstate this, because on some level, of course, anything can fail in some sense, but under Oklahoma law, they almost can't, because what you're doing by setting up the TIF district, I, I like to use the image of, you're just making a bucket to catch these new revenues if they start, you know, coming out of this project. So all it is, is a way to, to capture these and earmark them for this area, for the projects in the plan. The TIF itself isn't a debt, and it's not like other states we hear about and read about, where you set up a TIF and that instantly is a debt, or that's instantly money going back to a developer. We, we don't do that in Oklahoma. We're very conservative fiscally. We don't like debt, and we don't allow people to give away public money to the private side. The only way any money in a TIF district can go to a private entity or make a commitment is through the same processes we have otherwise. You have a contract. You say what you're going to get for the contract, and money only gets spent when you're going to get something in return for it. So I've done a whole TIF project that was pay-as-you-go. I mean, it's a, it's a little one. It's just a streetscape project where they upgraded their historic Main Street. They didn't want to incur debt, so when a little money came in, then they'd do another median or another flower bed. So you, you still have all your options open to you, and if you take small steps, if you look at each sensible piece of infrastructure, and if it makes sense to borrow some money or issue some bonds to do it, you do that. There's no, there's not really a way that it can fail.
And, and I want to say, I appreciate all the time that you spend asking, answering hundreds of questions that I've asked you over this, but if I understand, basically, you said the chicken or the egg. Well, go, this is, this is our Christmas wish list in October. The TIF itself, I mean, one, it doesn't even exist right now. Two, if a TIF is passed, then that's either the chicken or the egg, but the TIF passing will then allow us to have a conversation with a developer about the project?
Exactly right. It's a way of saying, we've made a commitment that if new public revenues are generated in this area, we're going to spend them in this area.
So at this time, there is no agreement between a developer and the City of Yukon?
There's none.
Okay, because right now, we don't, the developer, I guess, is still in negotiations with even the land purchase. So we're, we're not even, the chicken and the egg are still sitting over on the sideline, I guess. Is that right?
If I'm following the image correctly, yes.
Well, it's not pretty, Leslie.
We're trying to herd the chickens.
Okay, hoping for the egg. Okay, but, okay. So then, if this process moves forward, and a TIF is presented, like the mayor pointed out, the TIF then comes here, and, and this group of people, whoever is sitting here, they have an opportunity to review the TIF under your council, and then we can tweak it, add to it, change the development, say yes or no, and then that's passed.
That's right. All that the TIF is, and that's the part that will be passed, hopefully, if the council... councils will at the next meeting, March 1st, but all that does is like set up these boundaries and basically set up an account at the city that says, okay, if sales tax dollars are generated in this empty land right now, so it's going to be a while, but when we start generating sales taxes there, 90% of the 2% goes in this TIF account, city's account, no one else's account, it's just earmarked for this area. So before any money from that new account gets spent, there's got to be a contract that gets publicly approved, or, you know, there's no other way to do it, just the same way the expenditures we see on here tonight, they are public expenditures.
And this TIF project, it won't increase or change the tax rate or anything else in Yukon?
No, not at all.
Okay, the project will take, it will not take away from an existing business, for instance Walmart, or Target, or the new grocery store even on the other side of town that we've talked about, right?
Right, it's not capturing any of those sales taxes.
The TIF district, right now, its boundary, which is available at Larry's office or at city...
On our website.
On our website. It's, today, it's dirt.
Yes.
There is no revenue that is going to be taken away from any business that exists in our community and reallocated to pay for the infrastructure that we're talking about in this TIF.
Right, it's all undeveloped land. I think there's one, one house out there that's used for like an oil, it's undeveloped.
Okay. I think that's ended my list. Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that.
You're welcome, Mr. Albert, and I've actually been out on that property a number of times, and I can assure you, there is nothing but dirt.
I agree, and I did, this is, you know, I've done this on and off for 10, 12 years, but this is $37 million. It's a huge and very important, and I think the public should know how serious we take this, and we've had many, many conversations. We encourage you to come forward, go see Mr. Mitchell, go see Mr. Bottom, any person on this. We're anxious and want to talk and answer every single question and do it right. I mean, it is the largest project that I've ever been involved in, and I, I thank you for, I know it's not unusual for me, so I'm really kind of leading on. I still had a lot of questions. Thank you, Mayor.
You're more than welcome, and that $37 million, by the way, is a 25-year budget. It's not like we're talking about 25 million or $35 million over the next year.
I have a question.
For the life of the project.
I have a question.
Ms. Yanda?
Once the developers are in place, will we still have a say in the layout and design of the area?
Yes, that's part of the negotiating process.
Isn't that also part of the decision-making process for the YEDA?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Yes, and I wanted to make a, just one final point here, is that the day-to-day administration, the implementation, the project planning for the district would be handled through the Economic Development Authority. And if you remember, back in August of last year, the council approved the trust indenture for the authority, and so you have, your TIF district, Leslie may disagree here, but your TIF district basically is sort of an overlay on that indenture because you gave the authorities certain powers and duties to implement programs and projects, and so you're basically saying by organizing this TIF district, here's a project that we want you to manage. And then anytime there's any contract or any obligation, that obligation comes to the council.
Very good. Ms. Betsor, is there anything you'd like to add before we move on?
No, I would just echo Mr. Mitchell's point in that it works very effectively for cities and their public trusts to work hand-in-hand on these things. Cities are limited by the Oklahoma Constitution to make commitments of only up to one year, but their public trusts can make multi-year commitments. So by the city keeping an eye on things from sort of an annual basis and a policy basis, it steers the general direction, but then you have your implementation arm, your public trust, that can do some of the heavy lifting, subject to your direction and approval.
Much like Yukon Municipal Authority, which we have had in place for many years.
That's correct.
Thank you. Are there any other questions by the council? Thank you. Item four, consideration, approval, and announcement of March 4th, 2014, as the date of the second public hearing and presentation of the project plan, at which any interested persons shall have the opportunity to be heard in support or opposition to the proposed project plan prior to any council action with regard to adoption of the proposed project plan. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? I know that's a silly question at this point, but do we have any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
McCarron? Yes. Albert?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Moving on to item six, we've already addressed item five. Item six, consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount not to exceed $58,000 for the Police Department parking lot expansion and improvement project to be paid from the capital improvement funds as recommended by the Chief of Police. Do we have a motion?
Shall move.
Thank you, second. Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? I'm sorry, could you clear it for me just very quickly where this parking lot improvement is going to take place at?
Basically, to the south of the existing parking lot, although it will wrap around the old station two.
The old fire station?
The old fire station two, and will create, oh, we hope, up to 28 parking spots.
Thank you. Fire Station two, the old building, is actually going to stay there?
It's going to stay there.
Okay, okay. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Item seven, city manager's report. These are information items only.
I wanted to start by saying that our, our sales tax grew for the December reporting period by 2.54%, bringing us to an annual increase of 7.45% for the year. I would also point out that that is a 19.67% increase over two years ago, or three years ago, and a 14.23% increase over two years ago. So we're doing quite well as far as our revenues are concerned. I would also point out that our use tax, which we do not budget because of its volatility, as you notice in your reporting, grew by 32.6% last month, and that takes us to a increase over last year, year-to-date, of 60.61%. So very good news on the sales tax front. I'd also ask that you take a look at some pictures that Jan has provided of the new floor at the Jackie Cooper Gym. The floor is really, it's beautiful. It is a beautiful floor. I'm very, very proud of it, the way it turned out, and the total work that we did on the roof, ceiling, the split-faced block was very good. We anticipate that it will last our city for many years to come. Also included is a sample of the flooring material, John, if I could. Notice that it is a three-ply material, and it's different than anything that we've done before. I'm very, I'm sorry that Quincy had to go because he ramrodded this whole project, but the floor is the premier installation of a floor like this in the state, and one that they intend to use as their model to hopefully get more business. Additionally, in the back of that booklet are some pictures of our new splash pad. We're moving along very quickly toward completion of that project. As soon as we get some extended weather where we can actually turn it on and try it out, we'll, we'll be able to hopefully wrap that up in the next month or so. I'd also, I've provided you with a, the council passed a resolution in support of putting in God We Trust. What we found was, as you can see by the mayor's chair right here, that the existing seal is too big to allow us to put the words up above the seal. So we have changed, and we've had a designer come in, and what you see in front of you, we've given you a picture, would be a redesign of the seal, not a redesign, but we'll change the seal to an appropriate size and then put in God We Trust above the top of that to where people not only sitting on the front row can see it looking up, but also those that are sitting on the back row can see it as well. Finally, on March the 1st, we hope everybody will get up early and go for the trout fish out at the Dale Robertson Center Pond. Please go and fish, catch all the fish you want, then get real cold and go inside and enjoy pancakes with the Rotary Club inside the DRC. It's a wonderful morning and a great experience, and we hope, if you need a kid, I'm sure that we can find one for you to rent and make sure that everybody enjoys the whole day. Mayor, with that, I conclude my remarks and stand ready for your questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the council on those two topics from our city manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to item eight, new business?
Not tonight.
No new business. Number nine is council discussion. Councilwoman Yanda?
Well, I appreciate all those that were here in support of the Yukon sports facility, and I look forward to moving forward and making this facility a reality. And thank you, Leslie and Larry, for educating us on TIF and on the Frisco Ridge development, and I just hope that all the citizens of Yukon will embrace this project as well as the other projects and growth that we have going on in Yukon to make Yukon a better place to live, and that we can capture new businesses and provide for our families and citizens the way other communities can. Thank you.
Councilwoman Albert?
Rick, it's a great place, isn't it?
I love Yukon!
Well, Mr. Opitz is standing back here, one of Yukon's big cheerleaders, and I think this meeting is an example of, if you've enjoyed the last five or 10 years in Yukon, the next five or 10 years better hold on, because it is very, very exciting. I mean, the opportunity abounds. It's amazing, and anyone that doesn't think that this isn't a great place to live and that opportunity is just not oozing out of every crack in the sidewalk and every joint in the street is nuts. But it's important. Thank you all for coming tonight, but don't make this your first and only meeting. It's important that you continue to show these people the support. It's contagious. If you spread it around the community, it will grow, but it's like a flower, if you don't water it, it'll die. So you've got to continue to talk about, you've got to gain the momentum, and you've got to be part of these meetings and help this soccer project, this indoor pool, or this TIF work. If you have an idea, if you have a thought, I mean, your opinion matters. I've said that for the whole time I've been here, and if you have an opinion, and you stay at home, and you don't come down here, or you don't contact one of these men or women, or you don't contact Mr. Bottom or Mr. Mitchell or someone else and share that with us, then we don't know. It is so important, please come and tell us. You know, tell me, John, you're making a mistake. What you're doing is wrong. I need to know. It's important that we brainstorm, because once this thing happens, it's over with. Before it happens, we can change it, we can modify it. It's very important that you share the information. I think it's, I think, I'm so excited that Yukon is headed in a better and, it's not even a good sentence, just a better and better direction every day. Leslie, Larry, staff, everybody, Rick, I mean, it's infectious, it's contagious. Thank you all very much.
Councilwoman McCarron?
Well, I was, one of my true important projects has come to pass, and that is the Jackie Cooper Gym. My wife walks up there every morning, so I hear about it, and consequently, all of the improvements up there have certainly made her life better, which flows over to me in various forms, and I genuinely appreciate that. It is, it was simply time to have some nice things done, but to credit the city, the folks that were involved with that, a couple of, Jan is here still, and Quincy, and they really did a nice job, and they've really taken good care of it, and they run a good ship, and I think that's really very, very special to me that we take care of the things that we put in. The new splash pad is a pretty exciting deal, but something else is just, one of the neat things to me is the half a million dollars in donated labor that went into Mobile Meals. You know, those are all people that can't get out and that we feed, what, five days a week, I believe, isn't it, Jan? And I think those kinds of things are really what make Yukon the special place that Rick and John thinks it is, and it truly is. So just to let, you know, and it's important, too, to let you know that the business of athletics here is important in town, too. 1,055 kids actively engaged in the soccer program alone. Obviously, that doesn't include softball and baseball and all of the other sports. And, you know, I was speaking to someone just a little bit earlier about bicycles, too. You know, there's people who love to come here and run through town on bikes. So as John said, I think we've got an amazing next five years to go through, and with that, I'll conclude my remarks.
Thank you. Councilman Gerba?
Just, I appreciate also the soccer club, all the families coming out. That's really, really important to have a say in what's going on. I really appreciate your patience. You showed up en masse, what was it, three years ago, and really made a great impact, and I apologize that it's taken us so long to get this thing moving, but I feel really good that we're doing it right. We've got the right plan in place, we've got the right funding. I think this is going to go down really, really well, so this is the first step in getting this project to fruition, so, and I think when all is said and done, we're all going to be really proud that we're a part of this. So like John was saying, just basically stay involved. You can get our, any of the council members up here, call us. Our phone numbers are in the newspaper, every single, or if you have a question on the TIF, give us a call about that. I don't get a lot of phone calls, and I don't mind getting phone calls, I like talking to people, so give us a call, and if you've got concerns, if you want to say congratulations, or if you want to say we're not doing something right, let us know what's going on.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody that on March 4th, we have an election coming up. We have two city council seats that are up for election, and you know, I'm 53 years old, and it still never ceases to amaze me at the things that I hear being said and/or implied during a campaign. I would suggest that everybody, please get out to vote, and before you do, please look into what you hear, ask questions, and educate yourself. Unlike Councilman Gerba, my phone often rings. And I want to encourage you to continue to call. Those that have taken the time to call and ask me questions, I believe that they have gotten the answers that they seek. If not from me, at least present a source where they can find answers for the questions that they have. So on March 4th, be sure, if you are a registered voter in either of Ward One or Two, that you please get out and vote and make an educated vote. And with that, we stand adjourned.